Call the meeting to order. Would you please do the roll call?
Marita?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Heather? Jim?
Here.
Philip? Donald? John?
Hey, do we have any amendments to the agenda for today's meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any amendments to the minutes from the previous meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any public comments that are unrelated to agenda items for today's meeting? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have acceptance and scheduling of an application for a conditional use permit for home occupation from Mary Ellen Anderson at 191B Mikkoff Highway. Do we have a motion to approve, accepting that for the meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We also have acceptance and scheduling of an application for a conditional use permit for home occupation from Sean Blake at 1309 Joe Street. Do we have a motion to approve for the, accepting for the next meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on to public hearing items. We have a recommendation to the Borough Assembly regarding an application from Central Council Klinkit Haida to purchase property approximately 10,000 square feet of borough-owned property at 1200 Hoggin Drive. Do we have any public testimony? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move to recommend the Borough Assembly approve sale of approximately 10,040 square feet of Track A USS 1168 to Central Council Klinkit Haida for the purpose of constructing, constructing a wireless tower along with findings of fact and reported as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
Now, thank you, Mr. Chair. At first glance, I thought this was a, I'd be in favor of this, but after reading through the discussion and all the data we have in front of us, I don't like the location. I don't want to see a tower alongside Hoggin Drive. It'd be, I'd feel better if it was tucked away somewhere so it's not out of, you know, not, not in the, we have a lot of towers around town, a lot, a lot of, I just not in favor of putting it right there in the, in plain sight along Hoggin Drive, so I'll be voting in opposition to this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Questions, comments?
On the location there, though, it's right in a, a area where we have a large commercial. We got the fire department and the purpose for it. And, and these are all things that are just being used for the betterment of our area. Just, I don't care for the looks of some of the other buildings that are around, but I understand too, I, I see what you're saying, but there are other towers and they haven't affected the sunshine to me yet, so.
Yeah, that, one of my other thoughts was to keep this land for future city development too, and that's prime, that's where our city seems to be moving that direction and because we don't have downtown stuff available anymore, I think it'd be best for future development to leave it open. They could put the tower up behind the buildings if there's buildings along the, along the area there, behind the fire department maybe, but I'm just not in favor of putting it right on, right on the roadway there.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Jim?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Philip? John?
No.
Marita?
Okay, motion carries. Um, moving on to a recommendation to the Borough Assembly regarding an application from Lila and Grant Trask to purchase approximately 200 square feet of borough-owned property at the Dolphin Street parking lot. Do you have any public testimony? Please step up to the microphone, state your name.
Good afternoon, I'm Grant Trask, living at 400 Second Street North here in Petersburg. I'll give you a little short history. I am thinking of the fact that I had been taking advantage of property and when we'd had a fence put up by the city to separate the school district from my property, well, I had a rose bush and my rose bush made that fence kind of start to rot and fall down. And so I removed that portion of the fence and then I also removed my rose bush. But I also talked to Carl Hagerman and I said, okay, I got two feet here where the rock and the property line is to the, uh, school district. And is it okay if I were to put a little bit of fill there and plant grass on that two feet and then that would make it look a little bit more trim? And he says, yeah, I think that's probably okay. And then following that, a little bit later, then I built a greenhouse. And I was, I guess, trespassing already because I built my, two feet of my 14-foot greenhouse on city property too, which was designated as school district. And so then I realized, well, that's not a real big deal, but I'd run it by Carl and, and it's not too terribly good. There were a couple of little trees there that were on, right about on my property or El City property and they were small and I wanted to have a garden. And so I asked if I could cut these small trees because I wanted to dig up the roots and, and have my garden free from tree roots. And that was okay, that was kind of an easygoing sort of thing. But at the same time, I guess I could say I have encroached on city property. I'm kind of a fuss budget sort of guy and I wanted to improve the looks of what there was rather than just have weeds grow on the, on the spot that's not mine. And then also forgot about jurisdiction. Well, I'm getting a little bit older and so I'd like to sell my house and property sometime. And so a couple of years ago, I approached the city and city clerk and I said, I'm concerned if my property, which is also some city property, I would like to buy two feet of that, which is 50 feet across. And because if there was any encumbrance against my selling of my house, that might be something that would be a little sticky sort of thing when it came time for me to sell my house. So with approaching the city clerk, that was going to be dealt with even a couple of years ago, but then you have more important business and our city clerk has gone out of town, so we jumped on it more recently now. From what I understand, the, the school district, they had jurisdiction on this and they said, we don't want to break precedent and, and interrupt the boundaries of the school district, even to sell two feet of it. That would be not a good thing. And so it's somewhat in your hands here right now. I would say this is fine if I have to relinquish the two feet of property, but otherwise I would be prepared to buy it, but then I think I'm hampered by the school district plan. I'll stop at this point in case Lila has anything else that is pertaining to what our situation is. Okay.
I have a question. So how long is it, how long has that building actually been on the property?
Uh, see, one more?
Oh. Has the greenhouse been on the property?
That's been about 10 years. Yeah, it's been about 10 years.
The school knew about it the whole time?
Did the school know about it?
Oh, yes, yes, uh-huh, yeah, yeah. And they, and they, that's why it was their jurisdiction. And they said, no, uh-uh, this is probably not a good thing to have precedence and sell a little bit of the campus. And so I can understand that.
Please.
Well, I'm Marge Linus and I've lived here for 60 years and Grant and Lila have lived here for, I don't know how long, 50, 40? And I just think, I'm a, I'm a neighbor and I think it would not offend anything about me being a neighbor to have a little portion of two feet sold to Grant and Lila. I, I just think they have served our community wonderfully. Lila was a teacher, Grant a fisherman. The house is beautiful. I just think, and I hope the council will say, yeah, it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kath, my name's Catherine Schneider and I've lived in Petersburg about 35 years and I do not live close to this property. I support the school board in what it said as far as not doing this. Because I think, but I'm going to move on from that because they're saying it's two feet. I have concerns on what I've looked at the map and looked at some of the adjacent property, that it may be more than two feet and I highly recommend that you, before you proceed, you survey it and determine how much area is and where, it's possible that the wood fence between the houses and where the property boundary appears to be on the school may not be where it's at. So I just, and I had mentioned this to somebody on planning and zoning and I don't, I mean, you know, anyways, I really think it's important to know what, if it's just two feet we're talking about, then that's not more, I thought it was more like four feet or maybe more than that, more five, six. My reason of posing it if it's more than that, and even employees posing it in general, but I also understand how much Grant and Lila have done. When I look at the map for the school district land and the boundaries and all, you find out that on many sides and areas, it's up, right up to the edge of available land. And that, and even though right now we think like two feet or four feet or six feet may not make a difference, it can make a difference because there's a lot of variables we don't know. We don't know what the change in student numbers are going to be. We do know that there's an evolving change in how kids get to school and the equipment they use, so the flexibility of accommodating different things like that. And we also don't know how the change in enrollment up at some time in the future, obviously that may not be where we're right now, that we'll need to accommodate and fit more stuff in the small place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please step up and state your name.
Okay, I'm Kelly O'Connor Demko and I have an adjacent property and I just have a little bit more information about that back line. And so I just had Rick Braun just put the corners of the property, of my property in there. And it looks like the fence is actually six feet beyond my property, so it's actually on school property, my whole backyard. I mean, you know, four, six feet of my backyard. So if you just ran that across, you know, to Grant and Lila's place, then that is six feet as well, that is school property plus their additional greenhouse, two feet. So really it's like eight feet they'd like to probably have or be asking for, eight feet by 20. So that's just a little bit more, but I don't think they had that information when they went through all of this, so that just happened like two days ago, so.
Thank you. Any further public testimony? Yes.
So, make a motion first.
We probably should make.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Do we have a motion?
I move to recommend to the Borough Assembly, okay. Actually, this is not, this is a different motion. Go ahead, because I, I got confused, sorry.
Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Liz.
Just a, that's just a proposed motion. You don't have to do the motion as it's written, of course, right? So you know that, but just to clarify that.
All right, all right, I'll say it. I move to recommend to the Borough Assembly to approve the sale of approximately 200 square feet of public school reserved to Grant, Grant Trask for the purpose of addressing an encroachment of a greenhouse along with findings of fact and report as presented.
Second. Okay, discussion.
Yes. So, I was notified by mental health that I was, my garage was 50 feet over their property line a few years ago. And so I had to hire Braun and spend $1,500 to prove that it wasn't. Evidently, the state, back when they were doing those lines out the road, was using a GPS technology that was, well, if you look at the property line and I, I got online, everybody's property was on someone else's property. So anyway, I had to hire Braun, 1,500 bucks to prove that I wasn't. He said, yeah, that technology's old and they shouldn't be still using it. So, well, it comes, I, I think as property owners, we have a responsibility when we build something to know where we're at, you know? And yes, we can, we can be over, but, um, it feels like after 10 years, the, the school had a responsibility also to say something a little sooner and maybe enforce their property lines. So, I'm.
We also have with the schools, we have administration that changes, people come, people go, people come, people go, but the one consistent thing is what funds were used to purchase the property? What was the designation, designated purpose of purchasing the property? And it's like, sometimes the school had gotten, got grants. One time they took a grant and, and bought a, they set up a little program there where they had a snack, a little, like one of these little carts, snack cart. And, and they use that, and then they turn around and sold it and they, the whole thing. And it's like, if you had done the details of what the, what you were supposed to do according, if you've got grant money, then there's certain specifications and stuff that you just don't go out and just dispose of it or, or anything else. Technically, that wasn't even been right, but like I said, administration comes, administration goes. Maybe the next administration would be saying, sure, just do it, but we need to go back to where the money originally came from. So who does that property belong to? And the purpose of that money was to purchase that, do we just piece off according to basically our emotions instead of the facts of where the property, who it belongs to? I don't know how. Anyway, that's my thoughts. I.
I kind of do have a question about this because current code is a 20-foot backyard setback and so I would be curious if they would be required to have 20 feet if they're redoing the property. And so that is another question on top of the six foot in question. So there's a lot of, I think, more questions about this piece of property than you've been thinking.
Typically, we do a variance on something like that, but we don't usually even do a variance for less than five feet. So it would be the distance that it's encroaching plus five feet typically would be the, the minimum. Liz, I see you had a comment, so.
It's, actually that property there is commercially zoned and so.
Oh, okay, so.
The setback is zero, but we would still need to apply fire code. So depending on the use and how close it is to the property line, we would need, I mean, you couldn't put it right to the property line, you'd need a little bit of space there just for fire code purposes, usually five feet.
Liz, do you have information on what the school board said about the, the greenhouse being there? Do they have? Okay, I just wanted.
I didn't have anything more than what they.
They said that it's, the greenhouse can stay, but they're not in favor of selling the property, is basically what they saw.
Basically, didn't want to set a precedent by selling school reserve property.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they don't really have a problem with the greenhouse staying for the time being.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, it says on number five, the current zoning is public use, which is intended for areas for public uses such as parks, playgrounds, et cetera. We just, this body just agreed to sell some land at Klinkit Haida under the same description. So I don't see why it's any big deal that we don't, that we hold back. I think we should, my opinion is we should sell, okay, the sale of this property to Mr. and Mrs. Trask. Even if, even if this body does agree on it, we don't know what the assembly's going to do at their next meeting. It seems like every time we make a decision, it takes a lot of discussion and stuff, it ends up getting rejected by the assembly. I'm sort of whining about getting slapped down every time we do diligence and, and put in the time to make these decisions, then the assembly willy-nilly slaps it down. So anyway, I'm going to be voting in favor of this proposal, this emotion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Jim, do you have any comment? Okay. Yes, Liz.
I just want to address the zoning issue. So the borough can sell property as long as it's zoned. It doesn't matter if it's commercial, single-family, public use, open space. Public use zoning is designated for governmental and quasi-governmental. Klinkit Haida, Central Council Klinkit Haida is a federally recognized tribe and so the public use designation actually fits who they are and what their use is. So there isn't a zoning conflict and it doesn't matter that it's zoned public use. In the case of the Trasks, you can't use public use for a private purpose. Well, you can, but it's for single-family residential and you can't just put an accessory dwelling, accessory building on public use. So you'd have to, you'd have to combine his property with that property, right? So you'd do another survey, you'd combine the two lots. And you would take it out of public use and you would put it into commercial one to make it work. So, but the fact that it's public use, as long as the use is consistent, the borough can sell any zoned property.
Thank you, Liz.
Well, because this is a greenhouse and it's not occupied and it's not really a building, there's no real fire codes involved that close to the property line.
Well, there's no other building on the, on the other lot that is within the distance to make it. Yes.
No. So fire code still applies. It hasn't mattered whether it's occupied or not, it's the distance from the structure to the property line, doesn't matter if there's another building or not there.
Okay.
To the property line, common property line. So fire code would still have to apply.
Okay. So they would still have to apply to fire code?
And.
So they would need the five, additional five feet to not have to put a firewall up?
Through fire marshal.
Yeah.
Yeah. And depending on what the fire marshal said.
So they would need the distance to the farthest part of the building plus five feet to not have to put a firewall up?
Right, and firewall would probably make the greenhouse not so useful anymore.
True.
Right, so.
Thank you, Liz. Yes.
I was just going to reference the one public comment we got on time for this meeting and it was in favor of this sale and with that, I'll call the question.
All right. Roll call.
Jim?
No.
Philip?
No.
Marita?
No.
Chris?
No.
John?
Okay. Um, next is consideration of an application from Brian and Linda Haas for a minor subdivision at 713 Mikkoff Highway. Do we have any public testimony? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Haas subdivision with findings of fact and conditions approved as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? I think we covered a lot of this at the last meeting in their other application, so.
Yeah, I think we did, Mr. Chair, I think we discussed it pretty thoroughly. I'll be voting in favor of this.
Yep. Any further questions, comments? Roll call, please.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Philip? Marita? Chris?
Yes.
Okay, we have consideration of an application from Susan Short for a conditional use permit for a trailer to be used for construction purposes at 119 Cornelius Road. Do you have any public testimony?
Hi, I'm Sue Short. I'd like to put a trailer on my property to temporarily live in while we're building. I am recently renting and the price of rent these days is quite high. So I'd rather live in something and build something instead of, to me, throwing my money away on rent. You know, you're paying $1,600 a month rent and you've got $300 of utilities on top it and I'm getting a little older, I don't want to be working the rest of my life just to pay rent. And plus, I've had that property for a little while, I'd like to build something on it, get it useful. So. And there needs to be more housing in town, so I think this would be one solution for one family. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Is this an R1 zoning in this area?
Liz?
It's a single-family residential.
Yeah, single-family residential, okay.
I was going to just kind of give you the history on the property.
Could you just say your name, please?
My name is Ted Hasbrook and I'm with Sue. And she's got this property, it's already been filled. It's already got water and sewer on it. It's got a power pole, but no power to it yet. So it's all ready to build and it's got like a trailer, we can move it on there while we build it. I already have trusses for a building, I have flooring for it, I have windows. I'm a contractor, I build houses. So that being said, I would be the one building it and I'm not sure how long this permit would go for, a year, two years?
Liz, what's the time on that?
Well, it's proposed for two years, but then you can extend it as needed. So that's our usual.
Yeah, I just wanted to, have you verify that? Thank you.
So anyway, the lot's all ready to go and I went out there and I stretched all the string lines and all the property lines. I could find the property stake on the front where the power pole is at, but I couldn't find any other property stakes, but. So what I did is I went down through the woods, down to where Oldie Shop used to be. I found a marker down there and I whittled a hole through the bushes and I stretched a string line all the way up to Ellie Hager's house and found her marker. And then when I found that line, I got to investigate and I found another marker that belongs on Sue's property. So it was, I was able, so now I'm able to string line the whole property, I know where the lines are at and so. Anyway, that's all I got to say and we just kind of want to move out there.
Thank you. Any further questions? Testimony? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the application from Sue Short for a conditional use permit to allow temporary trailer for construction for two years on 119 Cornelius Road, including findings of fact and the conditions of approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
I fully support this one, Mr. Chair.
Right forward.
Excited for them if it's approved.
Roll call, please.
Philip?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yeah.
Marita?
Yeah.
John?
Any commissioner comments? All right, Liz, any staff comments?
Yeah, we have agenda items for September, so we will be having a meeting, hopefully, we'll also have a quorum, that would be great.
Meeting is September 9th at noon, I will be here.
Oh, my dear.
I was here last week, month, but I forgot until 1:30, but I plan on being here, so, almost forgot today.
I will not be here.
Okay.
I do have a possible appointment in June, so.
It's like we maybe have a quorum, so.
Well, there's two more that are going to be.
Yeah, okay.
Other pipe view, I'm going to have to make it, too.
Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
We'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
I, I.